Yeah, we're here to review the program of the program that was presented by the town council The mayor of Molumbe, Mr Kagali Henry has been appointed by the council and is responsible for the bank The president of the county council is the chairman of the office He is the official officer of the mayor He is the official officer of the mayor He is the official officer of the county council who has been in his successful story and will be here to talk about it Thank you for coming We're here to review the office the official officer of the county council and the mayor It's time to talk about the office
Yes, I'm here to talk about the county council I'm here to talk about the county council I'm here to talk about the university and information technology I have a certificate of theology I have a degree in history My grandfather was a teacher at the university he didn't have a family so he didn't have a family he didn't have a family he was a teacher He was a teacher at the district he was a teacher at Saint Joseph's he was a teacher at Xavier and he was an academic he was a master he was a subject he was a student he was a student he was a teacher 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 he was a first grade student 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 that is super second yes so he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a senior he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a senior he was a senior he was a senior he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he had a certificate of theology he was a teacher 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 he was a teacher
he was a teacher so inspiration he was a teacher
he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was fun he was fun next time I'll talk about my experience about my experience I'm a fan of BBC when I see my experience on the internet I just click I don't know I don't know I don't know so I don't know 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 so he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher reading emails he was a teacher 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 he was shut down so he was a teacher he was a teacher
he was a teacher
he was a teacher even up to now I do consult I don't know we have over 5 degrees he specialized in networking he specialized in hardware he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a coder he was a programmer 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 he was a programmer
he was a programmer
he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer he was a programmer so I'm a computer he was a computer he was a computer yeah what is a computer? functions or uses?
he was mixing theory
very good he was a part of it and then the part of it computer technology he was a hardware he was a hardware he was a hardware
he was a theorist
very good he was a computer 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 uses, functions he was a computer he was a computer that's when I started he was a computer he was a computer he was a computer he was a computer he was a computer
he was a computer he was a university
good question he was a university 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 so he was a university 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 what is a computer? example, computer
he was a computer he was a computer
he was a computer he was a computer he was a computer so he was buying he was checking 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 he was a diploma he was a diploma he was a diploma my first time I was a computer
what?
my first time he was a computer
theory part of it?
the theory part of it he was fine but the practical part of it I didn't know I didn't know he was a computer 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 he was a land fellow he was a land fellow he was a land fellow he was a university 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 he was a computer he was a computer he was a computer he was a computer you understand? so he was a computer he was a computer he was a computer that was determination because inside us we have a sleeping giant
he was a teacher 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 he was a teacher
he was a teacher for the past 18 years I can say because I'm now 32 years I was born in 1988 he was a teacher 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 he was a teacher
he was a teacher he was a teacher
he was a teacher he was a teacher
he was a teacher
he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher he was a teacher CP, Conservative Party he was a chairman 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 all along I've been an FDC activist because I'm a political activist I'm a politician I'm an activist I'm a radio activist I'm an activist I'm a politician I'm a anti-government Facebook page differently but on Twitter he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he can also have one he can also have one he can also have one he was against government so he was a politician he was a politician
Kagali Henry being an activist he was a politician
he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician so he was a politician 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 he was a mayor 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 he was a politician 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 now, to cut the long story short he was a politician 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 I was overqualifying so that meant he was a FDC he was a UP 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 he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician
he was a politician
he was a politician he was a politician first time he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician
he was a politician
yes, so he was a politician 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 so he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a politician he was a polling station 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 LC5 he was a politician 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 Katia o, mu tambula, o jukira ma mi chivira ango wa town council. Katina, tambula anga na ba, ngatu kola drayu. Katia o, kona kawua, katia o, ngakaluru akasigademo lesi. Ova mukiu, nga ke kande. Katii, ebi muku biatu wanguzza, as any upi, kova si nze na wangure yachiboga, town council, kuvame ya. No po ye ya wangula, era chagula ye ya wangula vunuji, o morala.